Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the September 21st Planning Commission meeting to order. Would Commissioner Barto lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, staff, roll call please.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
Okay. Public comment, this is time we'll take public comment on items that are not on the agenda that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Chair Elmore, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. And speaking of agendas, I just wanted to commend your staff on making the entire agenda for tonight's meeting and I think future meetings available for download as a single complete file, which I think is convenient for some people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Requests for continuances, staff, are there any requests for continuances?
Chair Elmore, we do have a, excuse me, we do have a request for a continuance, item number two on your agenda for the Champions Tennis Club's Staff Approval Appeal. The appellant cannot be here tonight, and so they've requested a continuance.
Okay. Do you want me to go through that now, or do you want me to bring it back when we hit that item?
I think it would be appropriate to discuss whether you want to continue it. So if you want to have a dialogue with the applicant's representative who's here and the applicant's, and the appellant's representative about that.
Yep, great. The applicant's representative, any comments to the request for continuance?
Thank you, Chair Elmore. Shawn Matsler, on behalf of the applicant, Champion Management. We understand there's been a request for appeal by the appellant. We'd ask that the Commission go forward and go ahead and hear the appeal tonight, so we can move forward. My client took this property under lease. He executed a 20-year lease. Lease is in effect. While the appeal's pending, the way the municipal code works is that he can't operate this for tennis. And so the tennis courts are just sitting there. We'd encourage a resolution to this, one way or the other. Of course, whatever the Commission decides, it can be appealed to the City Council. And so if that's gonna happen, we'd just as soon move that forward. If this isn't heard tonight by this Commission, it's gonna be almost a month until this Commission sits again and we can have a substantive discussion. So respectfully, we request a decision tonight on the appeal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the representative for the appellant here?
I'm not an appellate, but I'm a staff member of the Palisades Tennis Club, but I'm not the lawyer of the defendant.
Okay. The representative for the appellant is not here. Is he not here yet, Jim? Do we know? Are we expecting him?
We have every indication, he indicated that he would be here. We don't know that whether he's running late or not. So he's MIA.
Okay. Anybody from the audience wish to, I'll open the public hearing, wish to have a conversation about or talk about the request for the continuance?
Yeah, I would say something.
I'm open the public hearing, please come up, state your name. This is, again, only speaking on the request for continuance, so only moving the item to a later date.
I'm not here to discuss any of the, my name's Billy McQuade. I'm one of the tennis pros at the Palisades Tennis Club. I've been there 27 years. So I'm just here out of support to sort of figure out kind of what was happening, what's going on. Those courts have been sitting vacant for a couple of weeks, or, excuse me, excuse me, a couple of months. We understand it was supposed to be used for pickleball, now we understand it's supposed to be used for tennis.
I'm sorry, sir, we're just talking about moving the agenda either to a different date.
Yes, okay. We would like to have it to be continued, that's all we're saying. We'd like to have it be continued and, you know, unfortunately Tom Duddy's not here, but he'll be here. They've been sitting there vacant. We would like to, hopefully that you guys would offer the, our request to continue it so that we can furthermore have our staff and have our people here to have a proper discussion regarding the situation. That's all.
Thank you. Any other speakers to discuss continuing this item?
Chair Elmore, members of the Commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. I would just note, Mr. Matsler's letter seems to suggest the only option open to you is continuing this for a whole month, because he assumes that there would be no Planning Commission meeting on October 5th. But I think the reason there is no meeting scheduled for October 5th is there is no business on that night. So I would think you have the option of continuing it for two weeks or for a month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for continuing this item? Yes, state your name for the record, please.
My name is Robert Struthers. I'm a resident of Newport Beach. I was an attorney for about 25 years. My understanding that when you request a continuance on a matter that you brought forth as an appeal, to me it's a little unseemly that they wouldn't show. Kind of sort of think that if you're bringing forward an appeal on something that's already been granted, like a permit, that you would have the respect for the Commission and for the city to show up. So I would, again, respectfully request that you go ahead and hear the matter.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, and this time I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to this body to discuss continuing this item. Commissioners, anybody have a comment? Yep, Commissioner Celine?
I absolutely think it's an undue burden on the applicant to delay this because of the appellant's absence. It is his party, he should show up for it, in my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yep, Commissioner?
It's a de novo meeting, so to us, it's the first time this will be heard, so whatever the decision was made, it'll be up to us to make the decision. I'm inclined to want to hear both sides of the story. If there isn't anyone to champion the appellant's cause, then I don't really know what it is. So that's kind of where I'm inclined.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Harris?
Is the October 4th meeting available? As Mr. Mosher said, it could possibly be used.
The October 5th meeting is potentially a meeting, it's a regularly scheduled meeting. We don't have any other agenda items planned for that night, and we typically do not have a full Planning Commission meeting for only one item, if we can avoid it. So it is technically available if you want to go to October 5th.
Okay, thank you. Any other Commissioners' comments? As to Chair, I'll make a comment. I agree with Commissioner Langford. I think we should have both parties here to have an appeal. I think the appellant paid a fee to do this, I'm not sure why, their representative's not here, but I was under the impression that they're trying to be here. So to that extent, I agree with you. I think I'd like to hear both parties to see this item through. Commissioner Lowry?
Yeah, I mean, if this is continued and goes to another date, I would say that if both parties were duly informed and they're not here, I think they get kind of one more shot, and then that's, that's that.
That's that, okay. Staff, would we make a motion on this, or?
Yes, if you want to make a motion to continue this to October 5th, that would be in order. Or we could wait till we get to it on the agenda itself, but it's good to announce that here.
I think we're here now. I'll go ahead and, as a Chair, make a motion to move it to that date and give both parties the opportunity to be here and present for that.
I'll second your motion.
Right. Call for a vote.
The motion carries 5-2 with Vice Chair Rosine and Commissioner Celine voting no.
Great. Okay, and we'll move on to consent items. Item number one, the meeting minutes of September 7th. Would anybody from the audience like to comment on the meeting minutes of September 7th? Okay, seeing none. I'll bring it back to the Commission, close the hearing. Do we have a motion? One second.
Make a motion to approve Mr. Mosher's comments.
I'll go ahead and second that. Call for a vote.
The motion carries 5-0 with Commissioners Lowry and Langford abstaining.
Great, okay. So we're gonna move on to now item number three. Staff, are we all tracking? And David Lee, I believe you have a presentation?
Yes.
Let's see it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Chair.
Yep, sorry. I think we have a recusal on this item.
Oh. This is the auto. Commissioner Barto, real quick, will you just state for the record, you know, your conflict?
A real estate interest.
Great, thank you. All right. Mr. Lee, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair Elmore, and good evening Commissioners. This is the Newport Auto Center located at 445 East Coast Highway. This is a request for a major site development review, conditional use permit, and coastal development permit, case number PA 2023-0143. Again, my name is David Lee with the Planning Division. Start off with the project location, highlighted in red. This is the Newport Auto Center. It includes a Porsche dealership as well as a Bentley dealership. The lot area is 186,000 square feet in area, and the general plan and zoning designate the site as general commercial. Nearby uses include a mobile home park to the north across Coast Highway, Promontory Point Apartments to the east, a shopping center to the west, and the Bayside Drive residences located to the south across Bayside Drive. Just to give you some quick background, in 1968, the City Council approved Use Permit Number 1327, which authorized a 35,000-square-foot auto dealership, which included a showroom, offices, and service areas. Between 1999 and 2017, the Planning Commission authorized various use permits to expand the dealership to what it is today. The project request tonight is first, a conditional use permit for the demolition of the existing Porsche dealership and the construction of a new Porsche dealership. I want to note that the conditional use permit is for the entire Auto Center, so it includes the Porsche as well as Bentley. Also is for a major site development review to increase the allowed maximum height limit in the shoreline height limit area. And third, a coastal development permit since the project is development located in the coastal zone. This is, this is the existing site, as you can see, East Coast Highway is on the right there. There's an existing Porsche dealership, which is approximately 44,000 square feet in area, and a Bentley dealership in the front, which is 5,105 square feet. The site also includes 318 surface parking lot spaces. This is the proposed project. First is to demolish the existing building and construct a new dealership, highlighted in orange. This dealership includes a vehicle showroom, administrative offices, part storage, an attached three-level parking structure, which has 293 parking spaces, and a service shop approximately 25,000 square feet located in the first floor of that parking structure. The existing Bentley dealership in green is to remain on-site, as is. There's currently three vehicular access points on the property, two on East Coast Highway, and one in the rear on Bayside Drive. These access points don't change as part of this project. Just want to run through some development standards for the project. First, for setbacks, as you can see, only a five-foot left-side setback is required on the property. However, the project in green on the right provides a 50-foot front setback, 70-foot rear setback, 60-foot left side, and 40-foot right-side setback. So it greatly exceeds the requirements for setbacks. In terms of height, there's a maximum requirement of 26 feet for flat roof. However, through a site development review, which the applicant is requesting, they can be approved to go up to 35 feet high for a flat. The applicant is requesting 33 feet 11 inches to the highest point of the structure. In terms of floor area ratio, the project is complying, it's a .29, where the maximum is .3. And where there's 186 parking spaces required for the dealerships, the project is providing 471 spaces. So parts of the, a part of the site development review findings is about design and architecture, so I'll just go over some of the major highlights. As you can see, this is the frontage on East Coast Highway. The project includes a modern, vented design there, and the facade is constructed of steel and various metals. And there's also a glass frontage, which can be seen from East Coast Highway. This is the service entrance on the right, and you can see that the building is constructed there of corrugated metal panels, and it's in dark gray color in contrast with the lighter gray of the main facade. Promontory Point is on the left side, just to orient you, and this is still a view from East Coast Highway. And this is a view from Promontory Point. This is the matching dark gray color of the parking structure. So the applicant has provided a theme of, you know, gray, modern-looking building that ties together with these gray, darker and lighter gray colors. Another finding is about scale and compatibility, and staff has analyzed the project and found that those setbacks provided substantially exceed the requirements, as you can see in the photo, in the image there. The dealership is concentrated towards the center of the property due to those setbacks. It provides for open space, parking, and landscapes areas in those areas that are adjacent to the other uses on the sides, and therefore the bulk and the scale of the dealership will be visually diminished. Here's another aerial image to display the scale and compatibility. That is the existing dealership there, but I think it's good context to look at this image. Promontory Point on the left is located on a bluff that's approximately 50 feet higher than the dealership's finished surface. And the Bayside Drive residence is in the rear there, abutting the bay, can go up to 29 feet high. And the shopping center to the right has buildings that are approximately 29 feet high as well. So staff does believe that the proposed 33-foot 11 dealership is a harmonious transition in terms of height and scale for the project neighborhood. In terms of landscape, a landscape plan has been submitted and reviewed by the city arborist. There's gonna be landscaped, landscaping provided around the property perimeter. This is an image of Bayside Drive. That's currently an older wall, but they're going to refinish that, as you can see in the rendering, to a white stucco wall with new trees planted along that property line. The applicant will have a brief presentation and will touch on a little more of the landscaping as well. Since there's a coastal development permit requested and required, staff has analyzed the public coastal views and access for the project. So if you're standing at the star at the East Coast Highway, which is a public view road by the Coastal Land Use Plan, there's no current view of the bay or the harbor, as there's an existing car dealership there. Additionally, there's residences behind, which I've mentioned can go 29 feet high. There's no existing view there. The project wouldn't block any view that's existing. Really, the view that starts to form is west of that intersection there in green. That's when you can start to see the harbor. So the project really is not gonna impact that view at all. Additional viewpoints identified by the Coastal Land Use Plan is one at Promontory Point, those seating benches there, south on Bayside Drive, and the two parks, Casways and I think Back Bay Park. It's far vicinity, or far distance from the project site, so staff does not anticipate any view blockage from the project. There's also no access currently provided to the harbor from the project site. There's additional access points on Bayside Drive and other vicinity, other points nearby. So the project is not, project does not prohibit access to the coast. I want to go through some notable conditions of approval. First, for parking and circulation, these conditions have been included. Condition number six, there's no test driving on residential streets. Condition seven, employees must park on-site and not on Bayside Drive. These are paraphrased, by the way. Condition 70, no employee inventory or customer parking on public rightsway and public parking. And condition number 71, delivering, loading, and unloading a vehicle shall be on private property to prevent that happening on Bayside Drive. For vehicle servicing and screening, condition 10, vehicle service in designated areas and not in the parking lot. So it's gonna be in enclosed areas in the service shop. Vehicle service areas are to be screened from adjacent properties. Condition 15, car wash service is meant to be only ancillary to sales and service. And condition 43, there's no storage of car parts outside of the dealership building. Again, it's in enclosed areas only. And finally, for lighting, condition 23, the director may order the dimming of light if excessive. 25, lighting shall be appropriately shielded. 28, no lights spilled onto adjacent properties. And 29, security lighting is allowed after hours. However, Coast Highway lighting is only allowed until midnight daily. So these conditions have been added to the draft resolution attached in the staff report. This is the recommendation to conduct a public hearing, find the review exempt from CEQA under Class 32, and adopt the resolution approving the major site development review, coastal development permit, and the conditional use permit. I'd like to note that condition 45 in the resolution was a repeat, so I'd like to ask the Commission if you do approve the project to remove that condition.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Seeing none. I had a quick question. Condition number six, what is the definition of a residential street?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Residential street generally is gonna be more of your streets that are in and around your neighborhoods, so you think, I guess, and the easy way of looking at it would be something with homes alongside of it or affronting it.
So is Bayside Drive a residential street?
Bayside Drive is, I think, per our master plan of arterial highways, considered either a secondary or a collector. So even though there are homes along it, it's actually defined at a higher level than a residential street.
Great, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Seeing none. Any ex parte communications? Commissioner Rosine, I'll start with you.
None.
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 None for me.
None.
None.
All right. Seeing none. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does, is the applicant here? Do they wish to make a presentation?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Moni Del Sangh, representative for AutoNation, 3199 Arrowway Avenue, Costa Mesa. In addition to myself, this is Behang, our project architect. We also have Chip with AutoNation representing ownership, Aaron, our civil engineer, as well as Brandon, our landscape architect. Should you guys have any questions? I'd first like to thank staff, specifically David, not only for his presentation today, but last, feels like, three years of support and guidance that he's provided to get us here tonight. I know a lot of energy and effort goes into these things, so just on behalf of our team, just want to acknowledge all the effort that's been put into date. With that, we've read the conditions of approval. We acknowledge and accept all conditions and are hopeful for your approval tonight. As you can see, we brought our team to address any questions or concerns you may have. And Behang does have a short presentation, as mentioned during staff report, that we'd like to dive into just briefly.
Go for it.
Hello, my name is Behang Yu. I'm the project architect for this dealership. First of all, the client, AutoNation, is one of the largest auto groups in the nation. This probably is the most prestigious location they have in the whole United States. We are delighted to modify the five existing buildings that are underperforming and are old to provide a brand-new facility to provide the best customer care and a museum-type facility that is going to serve world-class customer service to this city. What you see is the new, brand-new image for Porsche is, it provides a metal front with glass bottom where you can see different types of Porsche cars displayed. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I'm not used to the presentations.
You're doing fine.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Yeah. Every resident of Newport Beach knows this dealership. They've been here for many years. John Wayne used to be a client, and he spent a long time in this facility. We want to provide a brand-new home for Porsche.
Thank you.
That's the presentation.
Thank you. Any other presentation topics, or?
No, unless you guys had any questions, we're all here to answer anything you may have.
All right. Well, I heard you say it, I'm gonna ask you one more time, just to confirm that you do, you do agree with the conditions of approval?
We do.
Okay, great. I'm gonna bring it back to our Commissioners, ask if they have any questions of you, Commissioners? Commissioner Harris?
I had one question. I was looking through the history of all the approvals. It's like, there's been a few start-stops.
Correct.
And it doesn't, you know, what's the difference this time? Is it gonna be done for sure? Is AutoNation new as a partner, or, you know, can you, can you expand on that?
Yeah, I'll definitely defer to Chip as far as AutoNation, as far as this project itself, we're pretty well vested. We're already in third round plan check with the Building Department. That came with the investment of, obviously, the architects, the engineering, you know, we've been at this for three and a half years, so we're definitely committed and we're ready to get going as soon as we have all necessary approvals. So we're definitely vested. As far as AutoNation and their history, I'll defer to Cliff just shortly.
Hang tight. Any other questions? Yeah, Vice Chair Rosine?
Yeah, I just had a question about the design. As you enter off of Coast Highway, you're, you're the first entrance off of Coast Highway. You're gonna pull in, and you're immediately in the queue for the service entrance bay. That's how I interpreted it. I'm sure Porsches never break down, but I'm in the queue for the Mercedes dealership all the time, and it's purely extensive at times. So I'm wondering, is that a concern of having the service bay backing up on Coast Highway? So that was just, it was visually the first thing I thought of, is when you're pulling in there, that's not, you're not seeing the dealership as much as what you see here. You're looking back at the dealer from, at the dealership from the second entrance. So I just found that interesting, so I wanted to bring it up. The other thing that I wanted to ask, and I heard that we're in third plan check now.
That's correct.
And so I don't know if it's too late for a consideration, but the rooftop of the parking lot, obviously have significant amount of parking there that's an overage. That's just for storage of the vehicles?
It would be that, as well as employees. Currently, a lot of our staff is parked off-site, and now that was a concern throughout the community. So with the surplus, it not only allows the vehicle demand, but it also allows us to bring everyone on-site and contain some of the concerns the surrounding neighbors had.
Okay. I guess, when you're in Promontory Point and you're looking at that photo that we had, the one thing that struck me is that there's no softening of the building from looking down on it. And it's pretty easy to add things like landscape wells or tree wells or something like that to soften that. I don't know if you'd consider it, but it's something that I noticed, and I was wondering if you would at least consider it. Otherwise, that's, those are my comments.
Well, I have one, seemed like a question about the queuing. Was that something you'd want, um, to discuss?
You know, I think it's a question maybe as much for staff as it is for, you know, your business model and what you run into on a daily basis, and if that's an issue, or if it's, that, that just was a thought.
Bring up one of the other team members who are more versed with the operational characteristics.
Great, thank you.
My name's Aaron Albertson. I'm a licensed civil engineer in California, and it was a concern for the staff. And we hired a traffic engineer that took the actual numbers from the existing dealership, added on a little bit of a extra because of the new dealership. And it was, should be part of our, the traffic study for the queue analysis would be in the, in the report, but it was sufficient that it wouldn't back up on 2 PCH. And...
Yeah, Vice Chair, I can jump in here too as well. We did, or we... We did, or we were provided a queuing analysis study by the applicant, which the traffic engineering staff did review, as well as looking at what they can handle existing, and then applying that to their future condition. They also had some programmatic ideas for if it should extend beyond, which it didn't look likely, they were able to move the traffic over to keep it from backing up onto the highway. So we were satisfied with their study.
Just for information with regards to your other comment, we did coordinate our design with the Irvine Company. They had no objections, so we did provide them with the necessary documents, just as a courtesy, and they had no objections to our proposed design.
Great. Commissioners, questions of the applicant? Yeah, Commissioner Langford?
Thank you Chair. I have a question. Will you be seeking pylon or monument signage on the street? I didn't see any in your plans.
Nothing at the moment. I believe there is an existing pylon sign there, but nothing part of this process.
Nothing part of this process? So would that, they wouldn't continue to keep the rights to that pylon if it's, if they build this, they can't just come back, you're not going to come back and try to seek that one again?
Nothing that's on the table at the moment.
Okay. Another question I had was for the parking structure. I know in some dealerships, they'll put kind of easy-ups to, like shade structures for cars, especially if they're clean, to kind of keep them clean. I'm just concerned if we put those on the third level, on the top deck of the parking garage for our neighbors at promontory points, that they may not like those as kind of more semi-permanent, kind of easy-up structures, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Are you anticipating using those on the top deck, or anything like that?
I will just defer to Chip on that. I don't believe so.
Good evening. Chip Sabadash, corporate vice president of real estate for AutoNation. Yeah, we're not planning on using those here. We have another off-site service facility, so to supplement this, and we're not planning on doing that here.
Okay. And I imagine whatever cars you want to keep clean, or are new, you can keep on the first or second level, and stuff on the third level is...
Yeah, for this configuration, we'd put employees on top, and the product undercover.
Okay. And I guess, and I guess I have a question for staff on...
I do apologize for interrupting. I just want to make it known that if they do want to put those kind of canopy structures up on the roof, it becomes part of the structure. It's attached to the structure. Even if it's weighted down by weights, it's still part of the structure. Point I'm really making is if they did that, it would exceed the height limit, and they couldn't do that. So I want to make it really abundantly clear, you can't put any canopies on this roof to make the building higher, because it would violate the height limit.
If those canopies are kind of solar in nature, does state law kind of prevent us from limiting their ability to kind of add solar canopies for that reason?
Commissioner Langford, you make a very good point. Under the Solar Rights Act, yes, there are provisions that allow for solar to be, in essence, exempt from a lot of zoning standards, and this is why you see a lot of solar on roofs that would exceed the height limit, and so there are provisions there for that, and actually, you see those kinds of canopies on top of the Fletcher Jones Mercedes-Benz dealership, that, you know, in essence, were exempt from the height limit. So that is indeed something that could occur.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions of the applicant? Seeing none. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing to the audience. Does anybody from the audience wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Staff, any comments for the record?
Just a general comment here. You know, we do believe that all the facts that support all the findings are contained within that resolution. You know, subject to the conditions, we feel that the use will be compatible with the area. The building height exceedance just doesn't concern us in terms of the location of the building. The lighting will be controlled, and that was a significant issue that we talked to the applicant about. You know, the lighting on the roof, we don't have, we don't have large light standards on the roof of the parking structure, so we have low-level lighting. So, you know, the design, coupled with the conditions of approval, we feel that it's appropriate for a recommendation of approval, and we hope that's your decision tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and bring it back to the commission for discussion and our inaction. Commissioner Larry?
I'll just give a comment, really, just, I mean, I travel quite a bit, and so this is really, seems like it's fitting with the themes that I see, you know, Porsche dealerships throughout the, throughout the country. I think it's, it looks nicer to me, it really updates, at least aesthetically, that corner into more of a modern Porsche feel of what I've seen otherwise, so I'm definitely inclined to vote for this.
Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, I really liked the design. I think it's a beautiful building, a needed upgrade. I appreciate the consideration on Bayside Drive. I think the mature trees, if it, you know, turns out like the elevation, I would think it'll look fantastic, and really shade it, and give the neighbors there some protection too. So I'd make a motion to approve PA 22202319.
Great, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, congratulations. Commissioner Bart, did somebody go back, or? Thought you fell asleep for a second. Glad you're here.
I was a time delayed.
All right, moving on to item number four. The Newport Village Plan Community Development Plan Amendment, PA 2023-0122. Staff, I believe you have a presentation?
Yes, thank you Chair Elmore and commissioners. Good evening, my name is Jocelyn Perez. I'm associate planner with the planning division. This public hearing item is an amendment to the Newport Village Plan Community Development Plan to update the uses and definitions in Area Five. The Newport Village Plan Community is known as PC 27. It consists of six properties bounded to the north by San Joaquin Hills, to the east by MacArthur Boulevard, to the south by East Coast Highway, and to the west by Avocado Avenue. The PC was originally adopted in the 1980s and has been amended subsequently over the last 30 years. This amendment is specific to Area Five, which is known as the Corona Del Mar Plaza, and it's down there at that intersection of MacArthur and East Coast Highway. Quick overview of the surrounding land uses, there's a mix of residential and office with commercial along Coast Highway, and of course, the commercial up there at Fashion Island. This is an applicant-requested code amendment, rather than a city-initiated code amendment. The, in this case, the landowner Irvine Company has identified areas of the PC text that are either out of date, redundant, or inconsistent with the Newport Beach Municipal Code. So while there are changes to a couple different sections in Area Five, the overall goal is to make the PC text more consistent and in line with the Newport Beach Municipal Code. So digging into the proposed amendment, starting with the update to gross floor area, PC 27 currently includes outdoor patios toward their gross floor area limits, and Corona Del Mar Plaza has two notable restaurants, Gulfstream and Tommy Bahamas, that have about 4,000 square feet of outdoor dining that is counted toward their gross floor area. In the Newport Beach Municipal Code, outdoor patios are not counted towards gross floor area. So this update will clarify that only area within the exterior walls of a building counts. Essentially, the areas within the exterior walls counts towards the GFA. The next update is to the definition of restaurant. PC 27 currently has limits on the amount of floor area that can be devoted to outdoor dining and/or live entertainment. That's much more restrictive than the Newport Beach Municipal Code. So this update will strike those limits and actually defer to the definition of eating and drinking establishments that's in the Newport Beach Municipal Code, so much more consistent as it is the code. There's a requirement for site plan review by the planning commission and the city council that's redundant, as the Newport Beach Municipal Code has standards for commercial development over 10,000 square feet in area. So if the Irvine Company was to ever redevelop that area, there would be a site, a site development review, so this is redundant and will be struck from the PC text. And lastly, there are, there's the update to the allowed uses for Area Five. Currently, the PC text provides allowed uses by right, and then also has a section that is dedicated to uses that are allowed, subject to the approval of a use permit. The uses that are subject to approval of a use permit has a separate category. That's, just for an example of how out of date this PC text is, that section references uses that are allowed in the RSC zoning district. While our current code doesn't have that zoning district anymore, it's most similarly related to the general commercial zoning district, and this change will bring the text in line with the allowed uses of the general commercial zoning district, subject to the same permitting requirements as the general commercial zoning district. So while there are no, there are no findings to recommend approval of a code amendment, staff does still analyze the changes for typical zoning considerations, such as land use compatibility, and then also consistency with the general plan. This updating the uses and the definitions of the Corona Del Mar Plaza is not going to change the overall function of the CDM Plaza. It's still going to be a shopping center. Uses that, for example, if there's a restaurant that wants to have alcohol in late hours, that's something that's still going to require a use permit, same as the general commercial district. And there's no general plan amendment needed in order to implement these changes. So this, this amendment allows the CDM Plaza some flexibility, it modernizes it, and that ultimately supports multiple goals and policies in the general plan to encourage economic development and successful businesses in our city. And then I want to highlight that there, this amendment doesn't have any changes to parking or parking rates. The plaza currently provides over 500 spaces, which is adequate for the, for the parking ratio that's required for the mix of uses in that shopping center. And so with that, staff recommendations and next steps. First, to conduct the public hearing, to find the amendment not subject to CEQA, and to adopt a resolution recommending approval of this code amendment to the city council. Next steps would be the city council would introduce the ordinance at their October 10 meeting. That concludes my presentation. There are representatives from the applicant here, and they have a brief presentation to share with you as well, and I'm available for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Jocelyn. Commissioners, any questions of staff? I'll start down here. Commissioner Langford?
Thank you for that presentation. My question is about the additional 4,000 square feet or so that's freed up by kind of redefining the restaurant area. So that 4,000 square feet would then become available for the applicant to develop in the future, but those future developments would still come to this body at that point, is that right?
Not necessarily. I mean, you could come in and do a thousand-square-foot addition to Tommy Bahamas, and it would be probably a substantial conformance review to the existing entitlements. We do that administratively. You know, if they wanted to take out Gulfstream as an entire new building, and then add the 4,000 square feet to that, that would, that would trigger, under the site existing regulations of the zoning code, a site development review process, which would then come to the planning commission. So, excuse me, the review process would be consistent with other shopping centers within the community, and consistent with the municipal code, so you may or you might not see it.
Okay. My other question is how close the shopping center is to its 15% restaurant cap as currently configured? Do you know if they're close, or?
The applicant may be able to answer that question.
My understanding is we're at the catch. Got it.
Excuse me, sir. When it's your time, we'll call on him.
Out of order.
Any other questions of staff? Vice Chair Rosin?
Thank you, Jocelyn. I'm just a, I need a refresher on restaurant uses. We talk a lot about net public area versus, and then here, we're talking about gross floor area. Can you help me with that distinction and clarify that?
Certainly. So, yeah, gross floor area is a typical definition of our zoning code. It's consistent with the general plan, and it just really refers to the enclosed spaces within a building with minor exceptions. The net public area is a term that we use for restaurants. We use it in the coastal zone now, but in the inland sections of town, we don't use it. You know, we've moved the parking requirements for restaurants to a gross floor area basis, but the net public area, you know, is a term that's applied to many restaurants in town that's been used in this community for many decades, if you will. But that's the interior space of a restaurant where the public is. It doesn't include back of house, the kitchen, or those areas, but it's really the dining room, the waiting rooms, and I don't believe it includes the bathrooms, but it's a, it's a definition that we used, and it's, and then we would apply the parking requirement to that. And so the new policy the council adopted is to move away from that narrative and use the gross floor area, and we're seeking an amendment with the coastal commission to apply that citywide.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. And ex parte communications, I'll start down there with Commissioner Bart.
None.
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 I had a brief conversation with the applicant.
None.
None.
Okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant or the representative wish to make a presentation?
Good evening, Chair Elmore, members of the commission. I am Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning, representing Irvine Company in this application tonight. I also have with me Chase Gilmore with Irvine Company. Hopefully, he won't have to answer any questions that you have. I'm happy to do those, but if we need him, he's here. I'll first answer the quick question that we had, is the center built out? Yes, the center is built out. So those patios are, you know, we're at the development limit presently, based on the patios being counted as gross floor area. So we'll just set that aside. So this PC amendment, again, the PC here is pretty long. We are just dealing with Corona Del Mar Plaza. The intent of this PC for Area Five, which is the retail center, is to be developed as a specialty retail commercial center, you know, allowing for a broad range of commercial uses. None of that will change. What we are trying to do here is conform to the city's existing municipal code standards. So the proposed amendment, again, will conform to the uses permitted by the general commercial district, including the gross floor area definition, which does not count exterior patios. The restaurant definition will conform to the city's code, and again, the patio definition will conform to the city's code, so patios will no longer count as floor area. We will remove unnecessary or outdated sections, such as site plan review. Because the center is fully built out, that section is no longer required, and again, if there were to be new development proposed, which there is not at this time, no new development is proposed, but if there were to be new development, then it would conform to the city's existing site plan review standards. And we would be striking the Section C, which is uses requiring a use permit, because, again, those are identified within the PC and also within the city's existing municipal code. The floor area allowable will not change. The maximum 15% restaurant will not change. The parking ratio will remain unchanged, and again, there are no projects, no construction proposed. The reason that, I should say, one of the reasons that we're doing this is that last year, we had to bring a med spa to this planning commission, and that is a use that doesn't require a use permit by the planning commission, and under the city's current code. But because of the process is identified in the PC, we had to come to the planning commission for that. So this is to streamline uses. Same thing, such as like a health and fitness use could go in, consistent with the city's existing code standards, and not require the planning commission's time to review. Tonight, we're requesting that the commission find the project consistent with the general plan. We're maintaining the existing intent of the PC Area Five. We'd like you to find the project as exempt from CEQA and adopt staff's recommended resolution. I should also say thank you to city staff for getting us here tonight, and we appreciate all of their efforts, and we're available for any questions.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you. Questions of the applicant? Start down there. None? Yep, Commissioner Lingford.
Shawna, thank you for the presentation. Should this pass, how much of that 15% restaurant cap would that free up for future use?
That's a great question. So I, we, we haven't done that math. I believe it would be about 4,000 square feet that it would free up because those patios are included in the 15% current cap.
Okay. Yeah. Um, the other reason I ask is, well...
Apologies. My, my client might like to make some, a statement right now.
Please.
All right, please state your name for the record.
Chase Gilmore with Irvine Company. I, I believe the patios are already included and the 15% cap, but even if they aren't with, with 400, with 4,000 square feet being freed up, it would only allow for another 600 square feet on the outside. So, and we, as she stated, we have no plans for any expansions right now.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Gilmore, we come back up. I had a quick question for you. Can you, real quick, just before we all know your title and how long you've been with the Irvine Company?
Vice President of Development. Been with the company for 11 years.
Okay, great. Just a quick question for you. Can you give us a little history on the CDM Plaza? Kind of background, just of that, of that center specifically?
Well, it was developed by the Irvine Company and, and held by the Irvine Company ever since. One of our most successful shopping centers and I believe a great amenity to the city staff gets to walk there. And a great, we have a great partnership with the city hall as well as the, hopefully pending library lecture hall.
Okay. Oh yeah, another question here. Commissioner Harris?
Thank you. Do you have any influence on the paint color ever?
If I did, it probably wouldn't be quite as pink as it is, but no, I don't, they don't take my vote on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing to the greater audience. Great. Mr. Mosher?
Thank you, Chair Elmore, members of the Planning Commission. My name again is Jim While I appreciate this is specific to the one, Area 5, I noted the consultant's letter said the objective here was to update the entire planned community to reflect existing conditions. So perhaps it is, again, the city that needs to initiate that. I would suggest that Area 3 needs an update because it is currently designated as open space and it clearly is not open space. We are in Area 3 right now. The other comments I have are looking at the red line on page 32. I'm not really understanding the motivation for wanting to change the gross floor area definition. It, if the purpose is not to retain the current open spaces, yet allow that area to be used for expansion of the buildings in some way, then I don't know what the reason for making the change is. So I really don't understand the motive for that. And then in the next section on permitted uses, I see it's adding all the uses specified for the general commercial CG zoning district in our zoning code, subject to all the use permit requirements of those. But it's not proposing to delete any of the things that are already there. So I'm not understanding if there's anything, why is it not just replacing the entire section with the reference that the permitted uses are the ones permitted in our zoning code for the CG district? Is there something there that's not permitted in our code? And the fact that they're separately listed, does that mean that they can be done without the permitting requirements in our code and only ones that are not there, but in our code, have to go through those use permit requirements? And I guess my final comment is I think I understood why the site plan review required is redundant and perhaps no longer needed in this. Because there is no, and also we heard that there's no major development plan there. I, I would note though, on the tentative schedule that was in the lobby, I look at the bottom of the first page, October 25th, says Newport Village EIR scoping meeting, as if there is some big development planned in Newport Village, but I'm guessing that's a different Newport Village than this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, before I close the public hearing, excuse me, the public hearing, does the applicant have any final words? Ms. Schaffner?
And Shawna Schaffner, representing the applicant. No, unless the commission has any questions, I don't think we have any final words. The EIR scoping session that Mr. Mosher referenced is not affiliated in any way with this PC or this project. So I can't speak to that, but it's, it's not ours.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, any final words? No? Okay, staff, anything for the record before we close the public hearing?
Uh, no.
Okay. I'll go ahead, close the public hearing and bring it back to this body for discussion and/or in action. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll...
Commissioner Lingford?
I got a quick thought. I see that we're kind of updating this plan, community development to more be in line with the rest of the city. I do like that this is a specialty retail center. It's special, so I don't really want it to eventually just become a regular shopping center and open to whatever else is going on in the city. So I like that it's special and it seems like most of the specialty is being kept. So I'm inclined to vote for it the way that it's presented.
Great. You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll motion to approve 23-1304.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Great. Motion a second. Call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Congrats to this team over there. Moving on, next item, item number four, uh, excuse me, item number five, discussion item. This is the Housing Element Implementation Amendment. Site location will be citywide, I believe, Jaime. Yes, Commissioner Rosine? Oh, I think we have a couple. Yeah, Commissioner Rosine?
Chair Elmore, I need to recuse myself on this item as a potential financial interest for my employer.
Great. Commissioner Lingford?
And Chair, I'll be recusing myself on this next item due to parcels owned in part by my employer are identified housing opportunity sites.
All right, great. No falling asleep back there. Mr. Campbell?
Chair Elmore, I'm going to start this presentation. Again, Jim Campbell, I'm your deputy director. And we do have a presentation. Jaime is going to assist me on part of this presentation. This is a study session. This is not a public hearing. What we'd wanted to accomplish here today is just to showcase to you and discuss, you know, in summary, a variety of initiatives that we're working on to implement our housing element. Brief background, the housing element was adopted by the City Council last year and was certified by the State California Department of Housing Community Development in October of 2022. The primary thing that the housing element does is that it reacts to and addresses the planning for the regional housing needs assessment. Just to refresh your memory, the state and SCAG want us to plan for 4,800 units. Now, the housing element policy actions in the document speak to rezoning a whole variety of sites identified in the housing element, actually totaling a little more than 8,100 units. And I think that was the City Council's recognition that given the high affordability that the RENA requirement had, we needed to provide additional opportunities to try and foster and produce more affordable housing as a result. And so that was the, the policy decision that the City Council made. We have three years from, to get it done and that deadline is February 2025 to get these rezones done. And I'll showcase what that is. And so we have one additional year for the coastal zone. So again, this is a little bit of recap on the housing element. You saw this last year. Within the, the housing element, we have a variety of rezones. We call focus areas and those are the basic list of those there and those are the housing numbers that you see. So and then when you look at the housing element, Appendix B, you see these maps and lists of parcels and that's the airport area right there. That's the airport area. So there's a, a similar map for each one of these focus areas. In the table, you'll notice the, the, the RENA allocations, if you will, to these focus areas and the total. And that's the, so when you look at the airport area, it's 57, 55, 77, I'm sorry, 5577. West Newport Mesa area is 1107, Dover West Cliff, 5121, and Newport Center, 2439, and Coyote Canyon, 50, 1530. That's where you get the total of 8174. Again, these are the existing policies of the housing element adopted by the City Council. You know, we did recently have a check-in with the City Council on our efforts here and the City Council did reiterate that what we're doing is to make sure we're, we're providing policies and, and overlay zones consistent with the housing element. And that is our charge. So again, tonight, what we want to do is talk a little bit about how to get there. The first part of it is the land use element update. So right now, we have a housing element that establishes these rezone programs for all those units I mentioned in those areas. And our land use element doesn't account for that at all. So what's in this package here, and it's in your report, is a series of changes to the land use element to accommodate all of those housing units. And so that's in there. I'm going to kind of do a high level summary in a moment. The second part of the presentation is how are we going to implement those in the, in the, within the zoning code. So we have a draft set of regulations which would implement those policies. And we'll discuss that as well. The third item on the agenda that Jaime is going to help me out with here is objective design standards. And so recent state laws basically preclude us from applying subjective development standards in our development review. The real purpose of that is, is to then provide a little bit more certainty for housing developers in what it is, is a, a, the project needs to adhere to. Gone will be the days of just compatible architecture. Well, what does that mean? That's a very subjective term. So what we're doing is creating an objective set of standards for these future projects. So first of all, I want to kind of get into the housing element, I'm sorry, the land use element policy changes. Again, it's to implement the housing element consistent, I'm sorry, modify the land use element to be consistent with the housing element. We went through a process over the last six, eight months with our general plan advisory committee and our general plan steering committee. We had many discussions where we went over these policies. The general plan advisory committee established a subcommittee for the land use element. And so we brought these policies to them. We sat around the table and we words met them. We debated them. We discussed them. We had multiple meetings. So just late last month, the full general plan advisory committee did approve or endorse what is in your packet here today. Part of what I want also to stress is that these are drafts. You know, what we're working toward is creating a project description where we're going to be doing an environmental impact report and that's what this will go into. That does not preclude subsequent changes as we go forward in the process and we'll talk about that as well. So what you see is not a final finished product. Right now, we've asked the, the community to provide input on these, these documents this month so that we can try to incorporate any last minute changes and then we can finish our EIR. But that's not going to stop other changes that this body could come forward with as well as the City Council. And we'll talk about the schedule here as well. I want to touch base on a couple of policies. Again, there's a, there's a policy matrix. It's a large format, 11 by 17. You know, it looks like this. And so on one column, you've got, the first column, you've got the existing policies and you've also got the goals that it relates to that are not changing. In one case, we are changing a goal. We've got the revised policy or goal statement here in the center section. Again, this is in your packets. And there's a kind of a rationale as to why those changes need to occur. And you'll also notice the table there, you know, the necessities. Some of these things are good to have. Some of these things are really necessary to have and some are nice to have. And so, you know, we kind of wanted to put that in there as well. Staff, as well as the G-PAC, do recommend all the changes in the matrix that you have in your packet. So I want to just stress a couple of things in there that are new. The first one is for Policy 4.2, which is really to establish the policy framework for rezoning the community consistent with those housing opportunity areas, the airport area, Newport Center, West Newport Mesa, Coyote Canyon and the like. And again, these are, areas are consistent with what the housing element does. It establishes the densities that we're looking at. And all of the densities are really taken straight from the housing element. The 50 dwelling units per acre is the maximum density we're looking at. 60 dwelling units per acre in Coyote Canyon. And again, though, and then there's unit caps that I, that I showed you those unit caps for those focus areas in a previous slide. Those, the same unit caps are in these policies. So we have consistency between the housing element and the land use element. Policy 4.4 allows residential uses regardless of the underlying land use designation. So you can honestly think about this policy as an overlay. You've got an existing land use designation for your office site. And that's a perfectly valid designation. That existing office you've building can stay there forever. Again, we're providing an opportunity for housing and the property owner doesn't have to, to take advantage of that. But we're making it really clear that, you know, you can have housing on that site that's designated for office through this policy and through the implementing zone that I'll show you in a moment. Again, we're also providing some flexibility for having an average density across a, of sites. So you can have a site, while the maximum is 50, you might have a higher density due to a density bonus, but you could have a portion of the site be a little higher density than 50. And then if you have a portion of a site that's less than that, on average, it would still have to meet that standard, not factoring in a density bonus. So that policy does that. 4.5 is the continuation of existing density. This one was really important for, for everyone who participated in the housing element discussions that if, if we're going to create these opportunities, they wanted to make sure that there was nothing that would affect their existing entitlements or their existing business relationships or their existing use. And that's what this policy provides. 4.6 is pretty basic. It requires consistency with the overlays and other existing zoning standards. 4.7 is new. And this is an interesting policy and you might want to pay attention to this one. It allows existing non-residential intensity to be reestablished in a mixed use context. So think about it like this. If you have an office building and you want to knock that office building down and put in a, a housing project, well, that's fine. You can do that. You've got several options as the property owner. You could actually recreate that office in your building or on your site. You can also convert it to a land use that would otherwise be allowed in that general plan designation. Remember, it's an office designation. It might allow other ancillary retail uses or other uses. You could do that. You can convert it to a restaurant and actually put it into the site as well. Now, if you choose not to rebuild any of that existing commercial intensity, non-residential intensity, then it stays within the general plan. And then what happens with that? Well, it could actually be reallocated to another development nearby within the same statistical area. All of what I've just described is in that one policy there. And the reason that, that we wanted to put this policy in is we wanted to ensure that, you know, right now this, let me step back. The entire program here is really just adding housing to the community, but it's not taking away any non-residential development intensity. We do anticipate the loss of some office buildings and the loss of commercial sites. They might get recycled and repurposed in a development, but they might not. So the thought is, is well, we're, we're going to keep that intensity in the general plan. We might need it. Adding non-residential development intensity to the general plan is subject to the charter, Charter Section 423. You know, at some point in time, votes might be required for that. The thought here is, is that, you know, as the community grows, we're going to need to account for other non-residential uses to help support this growing community. We might need a shopping center. We might need another auto dealership. We might need other forms of, of, of non-residential development to help support the housing. Well, this will provide a repository that could potentially be used and provided an incentive to do affordable housing on a site nearby. And that's another option that could occur. So it's a fairly flexible policy, but I, I want to just kind of focus a little more attention on that policy for you. The Policy 4.8 is housing opportunity overlays. So this policy really points back to the housing element and also points back to state law. And it's noteworthy because it does provide for nondiscretionary review of any housing project that includes at least 20% low-income housing units. But what that really does is it sets up where a developer, if they meet that criteria, they can go straight to the building counter and get a building permit and they would be subject to the objective development standards and other policies. And we do this administratively and that's required by state law. And so this is, is the policy framework to establish that. Now, there are other changes in that matrix. I, I don't want to, you know, I want to make sure we're being very transparent. You look at the entire matrix, there are, there are large and small changes in there, but these are kind of the most... But these are kind of the most noteworthy ones here. A lot of the other changes are really eliminating subjective statements about housing, also putting housing in as an objective of what our land use element does to make sure we're adhering to the regional housing needs assessment. These are very small fixes, but we feel that they're important to ensure that our land use element reflects the need to provide these housing opportunities and eliminate any subjective standards, right? All right, so the draft housing opportunity overlays. So we do have a draft of what the zoning code would say. Again, it would create an overlay zone for each of those focus areas that are noted in the housing element and in the policy matrix that we discussed a moment ago. It's there to implement the general plan, comply with state law, provide those actual rezoning opportunities. Because, you know, in the end of the day, you know, having the housing element is one thing that's required. We have to update the land use element to be consistent. But the goal of all these housing in the state of California is to provide a zoning opportunity so a developer can come in, property owner can come in and actually build that housing. And so these are the zones that would be there. Now, these zones, if adopted with the housing element, I'm sorry, with the land use element changes, you know, would be dormant until the vote of the electorate. Because again, this all is subject to the Charter Section four-two-three. We are heading towards a vote in November of 2024. Anyway, so the language that you there, that we have drafted for you would implement the policies that are in that matrix that we kind of summarized a little bit earlier. Provides appropriate development and zoning standards for residential projects. It has the same development limits of the policies and the housing elements in those focus areas. And it only applies to the housing opportunity sites or those sites rezoned to be in the overlay. One of the things about the housing element and the policies here, you know, we've got those identified lists of sites that's in the housing element. We may identify a site that we're not aware of, you know, two years from now. The process to be incorporated and included in this process after we adopt it would be to rezon a site and put it into this. And they would have the same privileges of everyone else. And so it has that flexibility built in. So, you know, there are several pages of text. I just want to highlight the one area here, which is Table two sixteen. This provides the matrix of the development standards for the various zones. HO one is the airport area. HO two, which is housing opportunity two, is West Newport Mesa. Again, Dover West Cliff, Newport Center, and Coyote Canyon. Within that, you'll see on the second row, the same development limits from the housing element and the land use element policies. You know, we're not changing minimum size or dimensions of properties. The density ranges are also established, setbacks. And then there are a lot of references back to the municipal code as well. A whole variety of footnotes there to help the practitioner and the developer to understand what these terms mean. And this is just one table. There are several pages of standards there for review. And so this is the initial housing opportunity overlay zone map for the airport area. This is a draft map, but this is the basic map that you'll see the city adopt, showing the sites that are housing opportunity sites. And again, these, this is consistent with the housing element. With a couple of exceptions, I think only one site's been added here after the fact that we got interest after the housing element was adopted, where we included it. And I believe that's the one in gray up at the corner of MacArthur and Campus at the very top of the diagram there. Otherwise, all the rest of those sites are identical to what's in the housing element. And with that, you know, again, we've asked the community to provide comments this month, and we're trying to collect all those comments and maybe incorporate subsequent changes so that we can kind of refine the draft. You know, I'm not expecting the planning commission to digest all of that which is in your packet. But if you've got some thoughts and you have some initial kind of high-level thoughts, we would love to hear them at the conclusion of the presentation. I'm just kind of taking a pause here, and I'm going to turn it over to Jaime to go over objective development standards. But if you have any thoughts here tonight, as we go through, please ask questions, and we'll provide a time for discussion in a moment.
Great, Jim. So we're just going to, we're going to go ahead and just listen to you guys all the way through, and then we'll apply at the end.
Perfect. That's fine. So I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Jaime Maria. He's going to talk about the objective development standards, why we're doing it, and kind of what they, what they do.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. Yes, so this third component is a discussion about the draft objective design standards. This is really to help implement one of the policy action plans from our housing element. But overall, the purpose and where these objective development standards are coming from is really through action through the state and reaction to the housing crisis. As you all know, the state has been passing a number of state laws that reduce the city's ability to review projects through discretion. And they're really pushing for objective development standards, meaning we have clear standards and provide certainty and a path for housing developments. But it's also important for the city to have good objective development standards, ensure we still have the ability to require good design. There's a number of laws on this slide. The main thing to know is that overall state law says we can't deny or reduce housing density based on subjective standards. And also, there's a number of projects that will be required to be reviewed by the city as by right, meaning we won't have the opportunity, as we did in the past, to go through design review or discretionary review through a public hearing process. I just want to acknowledge that the draft standards that we have were really a combination of work from a number of consultants. We did receive a grant from the Southern California Association of Governments to help prepare objective development standards. And they hired a consultant, Crandall Ramblah, who prepared the initial draft. That initial draft is really robust, but it was also really complex and a little difficult to navigate. At the same time, the Orange County Council of Governments also pursued a similar program where they hired placeworks, and they provided a toolkit so that other cities in Orange County can use. And it was a little bit more user-friendly. And so working with Crandall Ramblah, we actually combined the two, provided a more simplified version of our design standards. In terms of applicability, it's intended to apply to the multi-unit and mixed-use developments with densities of twenty dwelling units or greater. Those are really what our housing overlays are really intended to address and to allow and encourage. They would still apply to discretionary projects. So if a project was required to go through our site development review process, they would still be required to be reviewed and analyzed for consistency. But it would also help us with those projects that are required to be reviewed by right, such as the projects that include at least twenty percent affordable. And so at least provide some standards to ensure that some basic design that the city is interested in is maintained. For projects where maybe the developer has a different idea of the design that conflicts with the design standards that we ultimately adopt, they would still have the ability to request a waiver or a modification of those standards through our typical site development review process. And really, the main finding would be that the project possesses compensating design or development features. So it's some other form of high-quality design. But there is a discretionary process to deviate from the standards that we would adopt ultimately. I brought a little bit of history of design review in the city. We do have strong objective design standards for our single and two-unit developments to control bulk, scale, and height. We recently did a big overhaul of our third-floor setbacks. But for larger projects, we've really relied on the discretionary review process. And we never really had a design review committee or any real firm standards, which ultimately equated to a lot of design flexibility for developers in the city and for developments. Traditionally, Newport Beach has been pretty pro-property rights in terms of development. You know, there's not one set of architectural design that represents Newport Beach. And I think part of that is because we didn't have, you know, design review in the past. But we do have some design guidelines that have been adopted for certain areas of the city. By Bella Village, we have design guidelines that really focus on preserving some of the historical character of development in that part of town. Lido Village, we have design guidelines to help encourage, you know, higher-quality design and pedestrian connectivity throughout that whole village area. Manners Mile, there's design guidelines focused on maintaining kind of a nautical theme with new development along that corridor. But ultimately, our current site development review process is what allowed city staff and the decision-makers to ensure compliance with those design guidelines. Just quick comparison of, you know, difference between a guideline and a design standard. In the past, we've relied on design guidelines, and these are subjective. They've been recommendations, so it's very difficult to enforce a recommendation. Very open interpretation, difficult to measure and verify. You'll see in our traditional design standard or guidelines, it uses words such as should or may, leaving the door open for interpretation. And those are typically adopted by resolution. But design standards are standards, and their requirements are more objective. And they are going to be enforceable as a regulation. They should be measurable and verifiable when we write those standards. And they do use language such as shall, must, or is required to. And those are adopted by ordinance. In terms of the approaches of developing objective design standards, you know, we can go with a more basic set of standards, which again, would provide more design flexibility for development within the community. But it is going to be a little bit more difficult to enforce higher-quality design components or elements. So if there's something very specific, if you wanted to require, you know, brick or actual wood as architectural treatment, and if we don't actually put that within the standards, it'll be hard to actually require. But overall, it would be much easier for staff to implement, and it would expedite the overall development review processing because we'd have less standards and a little bit more flexibility, less negotiation with the developers. Some cities have gone with a much more detailed approach where we're very prescriptive. And then that is how they would ensure a certain higher-quality design element or a certain architectural style. But at the end, you'll get a lot of uniformity in design. A lot of the buildings end up looking the same. A lot less design flexibility, which ultimately complicates the development review and could lead to longer review processing times. So the structure of the draft objective design standards really focuses on these topics alongside. I'm not going to go through each of them. I just wanted to highlight like three of the kind of newer components, I think, would apply in the city. And so one of them is like private street standards. Currently, we don't really have strong standards on what a private street should look like internal to a development. And this standard is really intended to kind of promote more multimodal site circulation that provides opportunities for bicyclists, pedestrians, and then also parking. And it really tries to promote the streets to be an additional amenity for the project. And then, so it does provide very clear standards and minimum width and development requirements within these private streets. So instead of trying to maximize the space of a development, we do want to encourage them to incorporate some sort of landscaping and sidewalks within these projects. Another new component is publicly accessible open space. And so, for example, in the airport areas, it starts converting to more of a urban environment. We're going to get a lot more commuters and pedestrians in that area. We want to make sure that larger developments incorporate an additional amenity for not just the residents of that project, but also the employees around that area. And so sites that are at least an acre or greater, we do want to add a requirement that they provide either passive or active publicly accessible open space. And so we have some minimal standards, but there's still flexibility. They can choose to include like a paseo, which would provide a connection between streets through that project. And that'd be twelve feet minimum, like a courtyard, eight foot minimum. And then that could provide opportunities for people to go eat their lunch or just rest as they're walking through that area of town. And then lastly, horizontal modulation. This is just an example of how standards could be drafted to ensure that we don't just have boxes that are proposed that have no articulation or modulation. And so the intent is really to shorten that perceived scale and bulk of these new buildings. And so it includes minimum plate heights, minimum recesses, and describes for every so many feet, you have to have this horizontal break in the facade of the building. And depending on the density of the project, the standards vary. And so that's just a quick overview of the objective design standards. And I'm going to pass it back to Jim.
No, thank you, Jaime. One other item I just want to note, you know, you see the list of topics there on the left. I know Jaime kind of stressed three of them, but, you know, when you see that list, where the guidelines actually touch upon all of those areas. We didn't want to highlight all those here because we'd be here all night to go over them. But anyway, I just want to point that out there for you. So again, next steps, I think I commented a little bit about this earlier. You know, we've actually pushed this out to the community, trying to get some feedback. With the community, for the last month, they've been available online and available for people to download and review. And we're hoping to receive any comments from the community, you know, by the end of the month so that we can then, you know, review those comments and incorporate them where necessary. You know, as long as they're consistent with what the G-PAC was looking at and what we're looking at, then we'd probably do that if it still furthers the implementation of the zone. I'm, you know, I'm constantly looking at areas that might need to be wordsmithed, whether the policies or even the code. And so again, we're still open to those comments. So just kind of looking forward, we are preparing a programmatic EIR. We anticipate that to come out in late November and for all of these housing. Again, what this overall project does is it creates housing opportunities for a little over eighty-one hundred housing units. And so we're doing an EIR for that. And we want to make sure that that is available for the public so that we can make informed decisions as to what those impacts are to the community. Do we need any additional programmatic mitigation measures through policy that we might need to apply to the community? And that'll help also focus us on how we address the issues that all those housing units will bring. Updating our, updating our roadways, updating our infrastructure, and what have you. So the schedule going forward, you know, we do say second quarter of 2024. I'd probably peg that closer to May. We'll be to the city council, and we'll obviously be visiting the planning commission in advance of that with more refined drafts of all three of the components that you're going to, that you've seen. And so again, we do have a deadline, and that's why we're moving this forward. And it's really kind of driven by the land use element update. You know, we do have a Charter, Section four-two-three, that requires a vote of the electorate when we're adding a much smaller amount of housing than this. And so we're planning that ballot measure for November of 2024. In order to meet that deadline, we've got to wrap all this up by the summer of 2024. And so, you know, that's to then get that election done and so that we can meet the state mandate, which is, and we have one additional year for the coastal zone. So I just want to let you understand that, you know, we're not done with this tonight. You know, we're obviously going to have additional public input. We'll have the EIR. We'll have all this information. Again, we're moving toward having a public hearing with the planning commission. We're going to have additional G-PAC meetings as we go forward. And then ultimately, we'll end up the council probably in May or June of next year, and then an election in the fall. That, I have some, if you have any questions, initial thoughts, you know, happy to engage the commission in a discussion about it.
Thanks, Jim. Jaime, appreciate it. Obviously, a lot of work's got into this, so fantastic work to date. Commissioners, questions of staff? I'll start down with Commissioner Bartel. I was working my way up.
Thanks for a good presentation on just kind of easing us into what looks like a big process moving forward. And I know it's been in process for a long time. You mentioned the, kind of the nature of the, looking at the objective design standards and understanding the reasoning for why we have to do them. How are we trying to? This is kind of a conceptualite question, really. So there's not really a great, probably singular answer. But I guess just the big concern that I have is I envision, you know, the, as you mentioned, this balance between less prescriptive, more prescriptive. As we kind of are moving in this prescriptive direction, the two big kind of alarm bells that ring for me are, A, creating boxes that aren't economic, which is kind of an interesting set of challenges, considering the reason we're doing this is to, in order to create these kind of cookie, is to be able to create more housing faster, more economically. So I guess the first kind of thought process, I know you're working with these outside groups on trying to find good standards. What do we have internally in the city for working with our development community? I guess, in that process, or outreach? And then? And then kind of the second half of that is, how do we keep the neighborhood nature, the eclectic neighborhood nature of our community while being very prescriptive in these objectives?
Those are really good questions. You know, we, when we first started looking at the objective design standards, you know, we didn't want to go too prescriptive because then there's less flexibility and it kind of, again, it sets you into a particular design. We didn't want to be that prescriptive, but we didn't want it to be so simple and so cookie cutter that you're really not achieving some of the objectives that we're looking for. So we're trying to strike a balance in between there. I think we've got a reasonably good balance, and part of the public outreach process that we're going through, which is, this is included in that, is to get some feedback on this. And, you know, we have been sharing these draft documents with the development community. I don't know every developer in the world to send this to, but any developer who wants to look at this stuff, and several have, and we've been engaging in conversations with them. And I think what we're hearing is that they liked enough flexibility so that they can really understand what we're asking for in an objective way, but also, you know, we might have a better idea than what you've got here, and we provided that process in the document itself. So, you know, we're open to talking to any developer who wants to take a look at these, and if they've got some suggestions on different standards, we'd love to hear them. There was another question that you had in there.
Just the impact, and you addressed it somewhat, but how do we keep the community eclectic and not just, you know, you drive up Placentia on Costa Mesa, and there's a bunch of those exact same developments. How do we prevent that process?
Sure. Well, and I think part of that is to not be too prescriptive in these development standards. Otherwise, then, you know, everything has to be a certain height, a certain, and every 10 feet you have to have an articulation or building modulation. You know, we're not putting in building materials. We're not specifying any building materials that would lead to the identification of a theme, you know. With a prescriptive standard, you could actually identify a theme, you know, and we're not doing any of that. So that allows any different architectural type, whether it be modern, Mediterranean, you know, whatever you want, you can do it. So that'll help protect that. You know, I think what we're seeing in the community right now for these higher density housing projects is a little bit more of a modern flavor. And so they do tend to be boxy at times, but I think what we're putting in here is enough building modulation, articulation, which will break up those boxes. And I think, you know, each building does, is a little bit different, but, you know, I think part of the eclectic nature of this community is really in our existing well-established neighborhoods. You know, the airport area, you know, is a new, is going to be a new village. It is going to be a little bit more modern. We're already seeing some projects come forward up there. So I'm not quite so sure the eclectic nature of that area is really going to be damaged by these types of projects. It's not going to affect Corona Del Mar. And so hopefully that answers parts of your question there, but.
Questions? Commissioner Slean?
I was noticing in some of the, in the documentation, there's the minimum density in some areas. I certainly understand a maximum density because it affects parking and traffic and all kinds of other things. But if a developer wants to do something less than the minimum requirement, is that simply not allowed? I mean, if just economically it makes more sense for him to do instead of 20 to the acre, 18 to the acre, or something like that? Is there just requirements for RENA and whatever that you just have to meet those certain minimums?
therein lies why there are minimums in there. You know, what we're trying to do is produce housing and produce affordable housing with it. At the lower densities, you get some housing, but you definitely don't get affordable housing. And so I think to achieve the goal for affordability, we have to go to a higher density. You know, what we're also hearing from our conversations with stakeholders is that even the density that we've identified 50 dwelling units per acre, you know, might not even be economically feasible in all cases. And that's why there is some built-in flexibility. You know, even with G-PAC, we had a robust debate about potentially suggesting a higher density, maybe in the airport area or Newport Center. Ultimately, that wasn't the recommendation of G-PAC. But the lower density, you know, we do, there are developers out there that only do lower density, and if they can take an opportunity to do that here, then they will lose out on an opportunity to provide additional housing. And so that's why we put that minimum density in there.
Commissioner Harris?
First of all, thank you, staff, and the, all the volunteers in the advisory committee. I mean, this is a bear. It's a ton of work. I can't imagine, you know, digging through all this. So really appreciate all the effort. I noticed Banning Ranch on there. That's very nice to have that area chunk away, about a third, a quarter of what we need. 4.7, which we talked about, the transfer rights, I think it's a really great idea. I just want to get my head around a little more. You're saying uses, so say residential use takes an old market or some other use that in an area that old use could potentially then be used on a separate property that in the past wouldn't have been zoned for or wouldn't have had these allowed? Is that kind of the intent there?
It could potentially relocate to an adjacent parcel, but there are limits. Statistical areas, the entire community is broken down into, like, the airport area is really one statistical area between Jamboree Campus and 73. And so it would have to stay within that statistical area. It helps maintain the integrity of the general plan. But if it is going to be moved, if you will, within that parameter, it has to then be consistent with what the general plan designation is for the parcel that's accepting that. So if it's an office parcel, well, then it turns into office. Well, you know, in the office zone, we actually allow, you know, ancillary retail and other uses, and so it would be consistent with those rules. So, you know, it might potentially turn into a restaurant, might potentially turn into retail, it could turn into an automobile dealership if that's what's allowed as well. And so, but again, the recipient side, it would have to be consistent with the general plan.
Larry?
Just a question on procedural, if it's not this far. I mean, if, you know, as Commissioners Harris said rightfully so, there's so much work that goes into this, but if it is voted down in November of 24, do you just start over? What's the, what is the process? Because it's a heck of a lot to start over with. And I only say that just because I think we all know there's a lot of voices, you know, one way or the other on this density stuff, and it could be a contentious election. I'm just saying, does that throw us out of compliance right away, and we got to piecemeal something together? Just what would be those next steps if that did not go through November 24?
Sure. You know, we put a lot of thought into that question, and we still don't have a very good answer because it's just uncharted territory. We really just don't know. What I can say is, you know, in the housing element, we speak to potentially coming back with a revised design and maybe trying to go at this again as a second, you know, a second process. So that's one option. You know, and I don't know how, you know, if it goes, if this one goes down, you know, maybe we reduce the intensity. Is that going to change the outcome of the vote? Maybe, maybe not. We just don't know. At the end of the day, you can see I'm speculating here. I don't know what's going to happen. But if we don't get the zoning in place, there will come a point where the state will say, we're out of compliance, and they could decertify our housing element. And that would be a challenging thing. We're very proud of the fact that we have a certified housing element. It helps us. It gives us the time to plan for these units within this three-year time window, that deadline that I mentioned. If we're out of compliance, again, after that 30, basically, there's the builder's remedy that could come in, and so builders could start to build the housing consistent with, you know, what is it, SB 35, I guess it is, the builder's remedy, other state laws. And I think this provides us an opportunity to plan for that. But again, if it fails, you know, we will have failed to deliver the housing units required by the housing element and state law. You know, how we get, how we get around that with the electorate is just uncharted territory, and I just don't have a better answer for you.
Thank you. Jim, which policy clarifies the density? Is that policy 4.2?
Yes, policy 4.2 is a new policy, and it specifies the different areas that we've talked about, and it has a minimum and maximum dwelling units per acre. They're either 30 to 50 dwelling units per acre. That's airport. West Newport is 18 to 50. And then there's also the unit caps in there. Again, these are taken straight out of the housing element.
So what if you have outside circumstances in a specific area like the airport or topography or things of that nature that could offset that specific area, and then it falls short and it doesn't hit the density? How does that get?
Well, so the mandates of the RENA housing element law and our housing element now really set up that we provide the housing opportunity. So again, that's that zoning. You know, it's not a construction mandate. You know, there really is no provisions here. We don't have to build it. The property owners don't have to build it. You know, I think in years to come, when we come upon the end of this cycle in 2029, you know, the state's probably going to be looking at, they will be looking at us to say, well, how'd you do? Did we get any production? And if we're falling, falling very short of these targets, I'm sure the state will come at us and say, well, okay, well, what you're planning for didn't work very well. So go analyze that, find the impediments, and then eliminate them. You know, it's so, that process is going to happen throughout the next decade and beyond into the next RENA cycle. I don't know if that answers your question, but, you know, the point I wanted to make was that this is not a construction mandate. And, you know, some areas are going to probably, you know, probably give me more interest in the airport area based on what we've been seeing, and we may have less interest in other areas. And that might be, a lot of that's probably market conditions or potential issues with individual properties that just might, that can't live up to the promise of that housing opportunity that we'd like to provide them.
You know, when it comes to design standards, it's all, you know, real estate's not, doesn't fit in a box. These sites don't fit in a box. You could have something like Coyote Canyon, where you're going to have different lots, topography, different sites, you know, that are going to be on different grades, backup to flood controls, it's going to, you know, it's going to be different. So I just want to be on the record and just be thoughtful about how prescriptive it is because if you have some of those standards and we have different topography, different situations, and you can't design them to that conformity, now we're going back to what we were doing before. So just, you know, for us to be thoughtful about, you know, over restrictions on the design standards from my perspective, maybe even broadening them a little bit, just some of a little more latitude to take into consideration some of those, you know, atypical sites and those other situations. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Okay. This isn't a public hearing item, but I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time. Does anybody in the audience want to speak on this topic?
Mr. Mosher?
Chair Elmar, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I really have to wonder how many of the residents of Newport Beach actually know that they're currently this month being asked to provide comments on this. Early this morning, I was at the meeting of the Corona Del Mar Residents Association, their monthly meeting. Councilman Lauren Kleiman was giving an update on what was happening in the city. And in her long list of things, she did mention that the city was asking for comments on this, and they were due at the end of next week, I believe. And the chair of the association, who like me happens to be one of the 30 members on the G-PAC, was asking Ms. Kleiman, what is that? I see now that there was an announcement at the beginning of the month that this was available for review. I don't recall or know that there are any reminders since then. So I'm really doubtful. There's a whole lot of public awareness about this. Perhaps in the development community there is. I don't think in the general public. And even among the members of the G-PAC, we knew we were asked to comment on it. I didn't know that the general public was being asked. I did provide you some comments because I saw it on the agenda. I intended and tried to send them last night. It's just been a little change in your address, so I don't think you received them until this morning. They're entirely about the matrix. They would be too tedious to go over. But I do have two big thoughts about it. Number one, I do not think that we're using the right approach for the overlays. I think they should be in geographic areas, and the opportunity to use those housing units that are available should be available to all the properties, not just somebody who is self-identified at this moment as, or being identified by some committee as being an opportunity site. I don't know why they should have any more right to that than anybody else. So I think it should be a general allowance over an area with specific standards in that area. And then number two is because we're doing this reluctantly to satisfy the RENA requirement. I think the access to those additional units on top of the currently allowed development should end, and I think we'd actually, the council had been told that was the plan, that they would end when and if we have developed enough housing to meet our RENA requirement. I'm not sure why this is a permanent, I'm not sure the voters are going to want this as a permanent excess bonus available once we had met that requirement, if we ever did. Final thing I would say, it's really very hard to follow all of this, even as a G-PAC member. As I mentioned in the comments here, you could look and find a number one place, different number someplace else. Within this agenda packet, you'll find different numbers. On page 12, you'll find that the limit for Dover West Cliff is 512 or 21 units, something like that. In the new implementation, handwritten page 21, it says the limit is 458. And then the Newport Center, in one place, it's 2439, another, it's 2374. I don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Insightful as always. Appreciate it. Mr. Mosher, anybody else from the audience wish to comment? Okay. Seeing none, staff, any final comments before I wrap this up?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for your participation. I appreciate it out there to this body. Any other final comments before we move on? All right. Why don't we go ahead and bring our commissioners back in, and we'll go ahead and move on to staff and commissioner items, item number six. Okay. Staff, item number six, motion for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Item number seven, report by the community development director or request for matters which a planning commissioner would like to place on a future agenda item. Jim?
Certainly. So I'll keep this brief. We do have a meeting on October 5th, despite what the schedule suggests. That was the continuation of the tennis club item there. So that'll be on that agenda. There won't be any other items that would ripen for that agenda. So we'll have that one item there. Moving forward to October 19th, we've got four items on the agenda that'll come forward. One is an appeal code amendment, and then we have a general cleanup item that the city attorney's office is assisting us with to come forward. And then we have another appeal, which is, you know, some animal keeping up on Orchard Avenue. So it's going to, actually, it's going to be a fairly heavy agenda on the 19th, so. And that really concludes my report.
Great. Exciting. Okay. Does anyone from the audience want to comment on the commissioners' report, those items? Nope. All right. Item number eight, request for excuse to absences. Commissioners, Commissioner Bartel, it's you.
October 5th.
Denied. Okay, October 5th. Anybody else? No. Okay. And that would be that, and we are adjourned at, what time do we have? 7:48? And that would be that, and we are adjourned at, what time do we have, 7:48?